So you said, John, the last meeting didn't go well for, I mean, it went well for those of us there in the meeting room.
Not for me.
Okay.
I was a little stressed because of technical issues with Zoom and everything like that. But thank goodness Cindy was around. She helped me a lot. And that's one of the reasons why we're having Zoom-only meetings tonight because of the technical issues. Nice shirt Cindy.
Thanks. I don't know if it's my computer or if it's you, but you're very muted.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna switch computers. I'm using a new webcam and ran into the issue this morning, or this afternoon.
Okay, because Dwight I can hear very well.
Yeah, I had told him that earlier, but if I turn it up then you're like really loud Cindy.
Yeah, yeah.
I can hear John.
Do we have a quorum tonight?
I don't know that you're gonna be missing anybody.
How can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I have to say.
Little better, but not much.
Really?
Better on my end, John.
Yeah, it's better for me.
Please be quiet.
Your dog is not going to be the first one.
Yeah, animals, kids, you get to know a lot about people over the Zoom.
Yeah, my, my dog will be right behind me while I go out.
Okay.
Jim, I did get a call from Jim Hackett. He's not gonna be able to join tonight's meeting.
Okay.
So we will still, we should still have a quorum, but it will be six. You don't need to appoint any alternates, but if you choose to, we would need one more to make seven.
Good puppy, good girl.
John, did you hear from Matt one way or the other?
No, I did not, Jim.
Well, everybody, my grandfather clock is chiming seven o'clock. So I think it's the appointed hour, and so I'd like to call this meeting. These township planning commission order will dispense with the flesh to the flag since it's totally Zoom. And before I get into the agenda, even the approval of the minutes, I'd like to kind of refresh some of the rules of the meeting as we've gone through, the township has gone through many of these meetings now. There's some things that turn out to be very helpful. The first one is we'd ask everybody to do two things. One is to keep their session on mute and also stop the video unless you're just, unless you're addressing the planning commission or have been called upon to make a comment. If you, if anybody there in the, in the public joins us, would like to make a comment as we go through the reviews, we'd ask you to go to the chat feature on the Zoom and let your request be known with your name, your address, and that you would like to be heard. And then between John and Cindy, they'll monitor that and call on those people for comments. And I guess as, as a fallback position where things don't work out, if these rules aren't divided by, I believe we have the power to disconnect people from the meeting. So your cooperation will be greatly appreciated. I'm just checking to see, has Matt joined the group? I don't see it. So for tonight's meeting, we have a couple regular meeting, regular members that are absent. So I'd like to ask Julie, Will, and Dan called us to fill in those two spots to give us the full docket of seven members. So ask you to be voting members this evening. So the first thing on the agenda, as you can see there, is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was on June 10th. I'm sure somebody has some corrections to make, so I'll open up the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have any, this is Dwight, I didn't have any corrections. I think the minutes reflected what I recall of the meeting.
I.
Corrections?
Well, I, I believe, at least in the copy I got, the people present for the township did not include you or Ann or Matt. I believe you, all three of you were there. Since you made, since you made motions and voted.
Yeah, I saw my motions were there. Okay.
So. Those are, those are the omissions or changes that I had. I don't know if anybody else had any.
If not, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended this evening.
Okay, a second.
I'll second that.
Sorry, who was that?
Brent.
Brent. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. Detter, that we approved the minutes of the June 10th meeting as amended to include the three additional participants. I'm gonna ask John to go through a roll call to make sure we get the votes counted correctly and attributed to the right people.
Mrs. Will?
Hi.
Mr. Caldwell?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Detter?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne? Mrs. Byrne?
Ann, unmute your, unmute your control.
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
And Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
That's seven to no in favor of motion. The motion carries.
Okay. All right, the first action item for this evening is the Stoffer Property Subdivision at 3,047 Marietta Avenue. We have a number of modifications in the plan, the final plan review. Do we have somebody presenting from the applicant?
Good evening, Plan Commission. First of all, I wanted to just verify that you can hear me. This is Aaron Navarro from Hunter's Car and Associates. Everybody can hear me?
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm here tonight on behalf of to present the applicant for the subdivision land development plan. The project involves the subdivision of 57 lots and the construction of 55 single-family dwelling units. These units will be developed on approximately 27 April. I'll wait till the, thank you. The subject property is located at 3,047 Marietta Avenue. Is currently being utilized as a single-family dwelling agricultural purposes. The existing farmhouse and accessory structures will be demolished as part of this subject property. The property includes one tax parcel and is located within a low-density residential RL zone. The property also is located in an airport hazard area overland district. The proposed single-family attached dwelling units are permitted by right within the low-density residential zone. In addition to the proposed dwelling units, the development will include a new public roadways, public facility, and permanent management facilities. Other improvements include site landscaping, lighting, and preservation of property natural features, which include green, wetlands, and woodland areas. Access to most of the proposed lots will be provided by the proposed extension of Lawrence Boulevard. The remaining lots will be accessed by two other proposed streets. A secondary unpaid 12-foot wide access drive will be located along Marietta Avenue, SR 023, which will be utilized as an emergency access only. Lawrence Boulevard is a township roadway. Marietta is owned and managed by Endor. The development will be served by all public utility. Public water will be provided by Temple Water Authority via an existing eight-inch water main, be extended with, to be extended within Lawrence Avenue along the eastern side of the property. Public Santeras sewer will be provided by Lasso. Located within Huntington Place West, the overall domain. Natural gas will be provided by CombiGas. It's our understanding that the adequate capacity and availability for all public utilities are provided. Finally, in accordance with proposed construction, will also be new water management facilities to be included and provided both rate and volume as part of this application. Included with this application, several waivers and modifications and deferrals are being provided. The waiver modifications and deferrals pertaining to mission as stormwater design, as provided and discussed with staff. We are, we are in receipt with the latest set of comments from David Miller and Associates. I will entertain any questions from planning commission at this time.
Let me just clarify, your name is Aaron, is that correct?
Aaron Navarro, correct.
Okay, Aaron. The last part you mentioned there about the David Miller comments. Did you say you were in agreement with them, or were there some that we needed to go over in particular with you?
Yeah, we are in receipt, and, and I'm more than welcome to, to go over any comments that staff or anybody else would like to discuss, but we are in agreements with, with the comments.
That's what I mean. If you're in agreement, then we don't have to go over all of them.
Okay, yes.
Okay. And according to, I believe, the David Miller letter, there are 17 modifications that are currently up for to vote, is that correct? But you may know better than anybody.
That's correct. Yes, Mr. Fullerton, that's correct.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Okay, I, what I would like to do is go down through those modifications. Perhaps, John, you could get us to the screen that, I think it starts on page 20, is their comments. Where their letter starts on page 20. Okay, let's just take a look at those. First one has to do with the scale of the drawings, which is pretty standard comment and request. Does anybody have any comments or concerns about that one?
Sharon, I just verified that, I'd like to verify the date of the letter that's being shown here.
June 11th, do you?
Okay.
Is that the right one?
Correct. Okay, kind of a similar general note is modification two, requiring that anything within 200 feet should be provided on the plan. And the applicant is providing alternate methods of doing that. Recommended for approval. If anybody has comments on these, please chime in. Modification number three there. This has to do with road improvements. I think there will be a few of these along the way here, depending on which road they're talking about. Typically, we do not grant these waivers. What we do is grant a deferral. And so the applicant agrees to do that, such improvements at any time in the future that the Board of Supervisors requires to be done as part of a more general plan or overall improvement project.
I'm sorry, you were breaking up.
I'm, I'm sorry. Modification three and four, and I think there might be a couple more that have to do with improvements of roads and so forth, sidewalks. We generally do not grant those, but we grant an extension or a deferral. So that if the township requests that work to be done in the future as part of an overall improvement plan, the applicant agrees to do it at that time.
We agree.
The fifth modification has to do with the spacing of the landscaping or tree canopy, street trees. And, and as in similar prior plans, this is what we typically do is as long as they're being provided on the plan somewhere, even though they're not at the regular intervals, we generally grant those.
We agree. We agree.
Street lighting. Can't say we see this one too often, but it's based on, I guess, your request is that it's just for key areas that would have streetlights?
Correct, at the intersections of the streets.
Actually, it looks like number seven has been withdrawn, so we do not have to take action on that. And that has officially been withdrawn by you. Is that correct, Aaron?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just looking at the two sidewalk modifications, numbers eight and nine. Trying to glance at what the difference is here.
The difference with number eight is sidewalks within the development.
Okay.
After a conversation with staff, they felt that sidewalks won't require part of the development, but then sidewalks along first to sidewalks being be deferred.
So do you want to take questions as we go?
Yeah, as we get, yes, I would prefer to go as we go instead of having to come back.
So, John, you're recommending, or you and Scott are recommending, number eight to be granted. Just didn't know if you have any other comment on that? You felt sidewalks aren't needed?
I'm gonna let Scott.
I think the question about the sidewalks is, this was number eight that you were looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to respond to Tom's question on the side. And this was on both sides, yes. It's more consistent with what the Board of Supervisors has been looking at on recent projects, and I think we tried to to follow those lines. So, Scott, are they?
We often defer, don't we?
On we typically defer on frontage on frontage on existing roadways. This would be a slightly different situation where we have this existing internal residential street. And again, it's generally been, our understanding is the wishes of the Board of Supervisors not to install sidewalk on internal residential development streets. Is that what your understanding is too, John?
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's the Board of Supervisors' sort of direction at this point that they're not looking to have sidewalks installed on internal streets to residential developments.
That is correct.
Which would be different than the frontage along, say, Stony Battery Road or Marietta Avenue, where you can get more of a you're going somewhere from place to place as opposed to just around the development. We have been deferring, we have been consistently requesting or recommending deferrals of those type of frontage improvements.
Okay. Yeah.
Are there any sidewalks? I've had a couple of projects where Oh, go ahead.
I tend to favor defer on both, because that gives you the ability, if in 30 or 40 years things change, you have the ability to come in and have sidewalks or some sort of walking path installed in if needed, but but that's my bias.
On the development that this, is there sidewalks in there?
I'm familiar with this development. There's no sidewalks in this development.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
All right. The recommendation could be changed to a deferral, too, if that's what you wish. It would have the same, accomplish basically the same thing at this point. There wouldn't be sidewalks required now of the project, but I guess, like you said, it would give you that little bit of an insurance policy for down the road that you could ask for them for them later.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks for clarifying.
But just keep in mind, if, I mean, if the township ever comes back and asks for that sidewalk, we could be providing sidewalk that could lead to
To dead ends, yeah.
Sidewalk, since other developments don't have it, so.
Understand, but as we go into the future and we run into trying to tie in sidewalks, it is nice to have that tool.
Sure. As long as you have the opportunity to extend that sidewalk elsewhere. Because there is somewhat of a liability there.
Yeah, if you put it in and have a dead end, yeah.
Bill, are you opposed to a deferral in that opposed as a?
For the commissions, this is Bill Bregel with Keystone Custom Homes. Scott, I wouldn't, I mean, the other thing we could offer if the township wanted maybe to put sidewalk leads on one side of the internal streets, that seems to be a common practice in a lot of municipalities these days, but that's another option.
I would caution the Plan Commission, the board's stance is not to been, pardon me, is not to add sidewalks to residential developments. And we just had a development where we had an issue where we had to remove sidewalk that was installed that wasn't maintained. And that was over in Gentry Heights.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we should require sidewalks at this point, but I do prefer the deferral.
Understood.
Language.
Yeah, there might be another set of supervisors in 10 years, Tim.
We might not be using cars in 20 years, who knows?
Okay, when we get time for the motion, we'll take this one separately, just to give us the opportunity to raise that point again.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment on the street lighting.
Okay.
This is Cindy Schweitzer, the Township Manager. The development, will that have light poles at the end of the driveways to add additional light? Homeowner light poles? Lamps?
That is, well, that is typically not a common feature that we install. We do offer as optionals. Again, I think how we wound up with the current proposed configuration at the intersections was through discussion with staff, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not part of those conversations. I was busy at all those times, so I apologize for the conversation now. But the only area I really have a concern is where Lawrence narrows down or widens up when you go in and out of the development. Now, it is fairly close to the intersection, but it would seem that there should be some lighting there. And I don't believe there's any lighting at all in Lawrence now, so that is kind of consistent.
Cindy, this is Bill Bregel. I don't have a problem if you want to add a streetlight, or the commission would like to add a streetlight there.
And I know the general thought of the board also is minimize street lighting as much as possible, so thank you for that. That was my only comment.
I believe right now lighting is only being provided at the two intersections.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find the sheet.
I think it was on the landscaping plan.
Yeah, you're right.
Oh, I do stand corrected. Apparently, there is street lighting on Lawrence. I was told there wasn't. From someone that lives in Lawrence, so I'm sure that's the case. Thank you.
So, is street lighting existing on the current Lawrence?
According to Travis Hersler, who lives at 758 Lawrence Boulevard, he's saying, yes, there is street lighting on Lawrence. Actually, on his property.
Where is this narrowing down that you talked about, Cindy?
Where the old Lawrence goes into the new Lawrence.
Oh, at that point, okay. Yeah. I see it there, yeah.
Yeah, so if you keep in mind, there's a street light at the intersection of Lawrence and Billy Drive. I guess the item of discussion is roughly at the property line where Lawrence is extended. That is where the reduction of Lawrence Drive is started.
Is the reduction, I'll say centered, or that drawing, it sort of looks like the reduction is all on the south side of the road? Am I looking at that right?
Yeah, it's somewhat centered. The problem is there's an offset on the existing roadway ways eliminated. And to maintain the required centerline radii. That's kind of why there's somewhat of an offset there.
Okay, going back to Cindy's comment about possible danger with that. If I'm going from the old Lawrence to the new Lawrence and just maintaining my distance from the curb, do I go straight in, or do I have the chance that the curb will pop out in front of me?
Well, now, keep in mind, what you're looking at there, and I don't want you to be mistaken, is water line. That's what you're looking at, that jet out. The reduction is actually in the radius of the curb.
And, oh, okay, yeah, that's, okay.
What you're looking at, that heavy line there, that's the water line. That is not the curb line. That reduction, there's a smooth transition between the reduction of Lawrence Avenue existing and Lawrence Avenue proposed.
Okay.
That does provide clarity. Thank you.
And then the intersection of Billy is, I don't know, what is that, 80 feet up there? 100 feet?
From the property line?
Yeah.
That's probably closer to almost 200 feet.
Okay. So there's lighting at that intersection?
That's correct.
Does anybody else on the commission want to weigh in on this lighting subject? I know my neighborhood does not have any streetlights on it.
If the change in width of the cartway is taking place within the radius, then there's not an immediate change where a driver coming up to the altered width has to move his car to left or right. It's going to be an invisible transition as you drive through. And if that's the case, I don't know why we'd need a light there.
That's correct. I mean, really, the change in width occurs in the shoulder of the roadway and not in the travel lane.
So if I'm driving the car and I'm a couple feet off the edge of the paved surface, I won't notice that I'm going to a narrower or a wider area.
Correct.
Okay, John, I don't hear any more comments. Let's move on back to, I think it's number 10 or 11 we're up to now. Alrighty. 10 was the cartway width. 28 feet instead of 30 feet. That has been a trend in recent plans for the township to try to reduce the amount of pavement, which also has the impact of slowing traffic down a little bit. Now, did this one require no parking signs or anything?
We do have
One side?
We do have no parking signs on one side, correct.
Okay, thank you. John, what do we hear from the Roads Department about these curves? I know there's, there were questions about rolled curves, but how do they feel about slant curves versus vertical?
Perry's fine with it.
Okay. I've said that. Down to 12? Okay.
Hey, John.
Yeah.
On 12, and this is just a technicality, and I don't know how you were determining cul-de-sac length, but the request was for the increase in cul-de-sac for Lawrence Boulevard. But in reality, Billy Drive and Ryan Lane are one large cul-de-sac as well. I have no issue with that. But I think maybe that request should be included in there. Because Billy Drive and Ryan Lane is a cul-de-sac off of Lawrence Boulevard. And quite honestly, with the emergency access, you could you could kind of argue that Lawrence Boulevard is not a cul-de-sac anymore because you have the emergency access out to Marietta. I just wanted some input from staff on how you were determining where the cul-de-sac started. Because looking at the plan, it looks like Billy Drive and Ryan Lane are just one large cul-de-sac.
Yeah, is that the 677 feet?
I'll switch back to the plan. Brent, to your, to your point. The subdivision land development ordinance defines cul-de-sac as a street with a single means of ingress and egress and having a special turning area for a vehicle at the end of the street.
Okay.
As far as the length, measure of the length, I'd have to defer to Scott. Because he and his team did the review for that cul-de-sac length.
Yeah, because we're connecting up to the development on those roads. That's beside it, so.
You're connecting to existing Lawrence Boulevard, which is currently a dead-end street.
And, oh, the other one is a cul-de-sac till that other property gets developed.
Correct.
If I may, and correct me if I'm wrong, the definition of cul-de-sac as far as the length is measured from is measured from intersecting street to the center of the cul-de-sac. So, we're defining the Ryan Lane cul-de-sac from Billy Drive to the center of the cul-de-sac. And the reason we're considering that is because it's a possible future extension that may occur. So, we're considering that Ryan Lane as a separate cul-de-sac, not considering the cul-de-sac from the extension of Lawrence Lane at the intersection of Lawrence and Billy Drive. We're considering Billy Drive as a separate street. So, the cul-de-sac measurement is actually from the intersection of Ryan Lane and Billy Drive to the center of the cul-de-sac.
Can somebody point that out on there? I'm not sure I follow that logic. From Lawrence, you go up on Billy, is that correct?
Correct.
And then you go around and you go clear to the end of the property.
Right, to a T-intersection.
Okay. Which doesn't go anywhere, really. And then it goes on around to this undeveloped property to the north.
Correct. So, the definition of cul-de-sac, as far as the length, is measured from the intersecting centerline intersection of two intersecting streets to the centerline.
Now, but now, we're talking about the plan here now, but why aren't we putting a bulb in at the end there, where the hand is? Are cars expected to turn around in people's houses?
No, there is a temporary cul-de-sac put in. You're talking at the end of Ryan Lane. There's a temporary cul-de-sac installed that will be removed if Ryan Lane is extended to the existing property.
Then that is a cul-de-sac.
Correct.
What Anna is saying is they're taking the measurement from the intersection of Billy Drive to the center of the bulb. They're not including Billy Drive as part of the cul-de-sac length.
That's correct.
Because that's a T, a slight T there.
Correct.
Yeah, that's never going to get connected to anything. I mean, like I said, it's a technicality. I'm fine with it. I just think it is actually one long cul-de-sac from the intersection of Lawrence Boulevard. I mean, it's more of a technicality, hang up on my end. So, I don't have a technical objection to it.
Let me ask the applicant, why is that shown as a T-intersection if it's never going to connect to anybody?
Initially, the initial design
It did.
Connected Lawrence Boulevard to Ryan Lane.
Yep.
Yeah, I remember.
It did.
We had a large retaining wall associated with that, of which the township expressed concern about that wall. So, we removed the wall and we were left with a somewhat of a T-connection there.
These are going to be dedicated streets, right?
Correct.
So, there again, we end up with a T hammerhead, or you want to call it that for snow plowing and so forth?
There is, there is a section at the end to allow there's a snowplowing easement at the end there. And it's somewhat, I'm not I think it's like, it's like a 50 like a 30-foot section there. Only, it's like 50 to 60 feet from the intersection.
I guess I'd ask John and and Scott and anybody else that might have been looking at prior reviews of this. Aside from that retaining wall, was there any thought given to connecting Lawrence to Billy or Lawrence to Ryan? You might lose two houses there or something, but wouldn't that provide a lot better access and a round way of getting through there? And then just shorten the cul-de-sac to the length of Ryan Lane?
I believe it was mentioned, Lawrence did extend through and connect to Ryan before. The wall that was required to manage the grade to get back down towards the stream was, in our opinion, and in discussions with Perry Madonna, was not something that township was interested in having support their roadway. The biggest concern was, once the roadway is dedicated, then that all becomes the township's responsibility. So, I think our comment to the developer was that that's not an acceptable option to have a wall like that. But to manage the grade and still accomplish a stormwater and to do everything else that needed to be done, this was the design that they came back with.
Not to mention, Jim, some of the homes that were removed, their backyard was literally feet within a couple of feet of the back door, and it would have been a retaining wall.
Okay. Well, let me just throw something else out as an alternative then. You know, instead of having, I forget what the number is here, 57 houses or something like that. Suppose you took Lawrence and took it through lots, I can't quite read them, is that 27 and 34 or 27?
37 and 55.
Yeah, or even the one right above it. Take two or three of those lots out and put a road up from Lawrence. That way, you've got circulation and you really have reduced the amount of cul-de-sac. I mean, to Brent's point, you've got a cul-de-sac that goes all the way out through old Lawrence. It's probably, what, quarter of a mile long?
And that, you know, having them redesign the road wasn't my intention. I just wanted to know where they were starting their measurement from the cul-de-sac for Ryan Lane from. That was all. I think they went through all their diligence with the township to maximize the lots so the project is feasible for them. I'm not looking to have them go back and lose two lots, you know, on this type of thing. So, I think they already went back and redesigned it as the staff has already requested them to do. Mine was more of just a question for staff. If they're fine with the cul-de-sac starting at the end of Billy Drive with the hammer, with the partial turnaround hammerhead there, I'm fine with that.
One of the other considerations that I think that, as far as we were concerned, and I won't speak for John, but was that in some other residential developments, the township has had repeated concerns from residents about through traffic and about speeds when you have straight-through roads. I know over off of Farmingdale, they've been dealing with that for a couple of years now and through the other development streets. One of the things we looked at with this was, I know it's a little unorthodox, but you do generally, like, people have to sort of slow down and turn, and it is a very again, maybe unorthodox, but there is a lot of traffic calming that's involved in this design of roadways. No one will get up to much speed as they're working their way through here.
I think, Jan, if you go back to what you said, and bend Lawrence to the north to connect to Billy Drive, that's going back to what Scott said, that's going to be the way you're going to have 12 other people going down Lawrence Boulevard that normally wouldn't be going that way. So, I agree with the cul-de-sac on Lawrence where it is. That eliminates a lot of through traffic and stops people.
Okay. I assume that the fire department has weighed in on this as well?
Yes.
And they're okay with it?
People at Billy.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Back to the plan or the modifications, so. Okay, then we're back to deferrals for Stony Battery and Marietta Pike for curbing sidewalks and pavement widening. Pretty much standard modification course in standard replies. If nobody wants to weigh in, let's go down to 15, John.
I don't have any issues on 15.
Where's that basin located on the map? I know they got a lot of slope on part of this property.
That is located on Lot 56.
Okay. Is there a buildable spot on Lot 56, or is that pretty much just stormwater?
56 is strictly stormwater.
Okay, so will that be a homeowners association?
Correct.
On number 16, you recommend that it be granted. Scott, is the location such a place that we should request any guardrails or fencing or anything like that?
I don't believe so. I don't, I'm not typically supportive of adding fencing around around the basins. I know one thought is that it keeps people out, but another theory is too, that if somebody happened to be, get over the fence, they can't get out again then too. So, and it often makes maintenance difficult if you put fences around the
Right, but I know over here in Homestead, when they did their last change, they put a rather deep stormwater basin in, and it was not too far from the road, and they put in some guardrails to make sure if a car went off the road, it wouldn't be in the basin.
Yeah, and I think we would have had that situation had the road still extended through. But I think with the cul-de-sacking of the road, it no longer goes like directly adjacent to the basin.
Okay, so are there any guide rails on Ryan Lane where it hammerheads?
There is, yes.
And off of the end of Lawrence, is that does that go right into the basin there? I can't recall, are there building lots right at the end?
There's about a 10-foot flat section after the cul-de-sac. Then it starts off about a three to one.
A three-to-one slope is fairly standard. It's typical that you consider that to be something that you can mow or maintain. You can ride a lawnmower on the side of it. So, it's not like it's straight down in. It's a maneuverable slope.
Yeah, the current concern, my concern, Scott, was if somebody went off the end of that cul-de-sac, they would be pitched into the basin. That's why I was wondering, just even a, you know, 15-foot section of guardrail, right where the travel lane is, so that they couldn't go over the edge. You don't think it's much of a danger then?
Not with the flat area at the top. And again, typically, we only try to use guide rail where it's absolutely necessary, because there are some hazards associated with the use of guide rail also. So, I think the leveling area at the top is pretty pretty adequate. And again, even if somebody went off, they'd have to be going too fast, not know where they're at, drive up over the curb. They'd go down into the basin. Again, it's a three-to-one slope. You would just drive down into the basin and be on the bottom.
Okay. Keep in mind, the slope of the roadway is a 3% slope.
Yeah. Again, there's concern of putting obstacles adjacent to the roadway and the hazard that that causes can be greater than simply the hazard of driving off the road and down into the ditch. And I would think that would be the case here.
All right.
Is there signage at the intersection that explains the roadway stops ahead? I'm just thinking, somebody who's lost on a foggy night might just keep driving.
You're referring to like a no-outlet sign?
No-outlet, road stop, yeah, road terminates ahead. I don't So, you're putting in a slant curve. That's a mountable curve. So, it doesn't slow me down at all. You know, I'd almost go with a wooden breakable fence or something.
But keep in mind, this is a residential cul-de-sac. I mean, typically, you don't see that at the end. So, I mean, well, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, if you'd like to put a sign there, but you typically don't see a get-in sign or on the end of a residential cul-de-sac.
The only other thing I was thinking of is that the terminus of each of these streets, was there any thought to putting in a snow dumping easement?
There is.
Okay.
We are providing easements for snow pile as per requirement of the ordinance and per comments from the township engineer.
Thanks.
Okay, John, back to mods. That was 1617. Scott, if you've got anything to translate there, go ahead.
The, we worked back and forth with the applicant. They added a significant number of inlets. And we generally try and keep those inlets at the property lines so they don't conflict with potential driveways. You don't want to be coming in and out of your house and clunking over an inlet grate every time. And also, we like to use the type ceilings here, but they put in basically as many inlets as they could with that, following that criteria, and they were still a little over the gutter depth. But we felt that it was just a minor amount, and we felt that it was acceptable with the with the efforts they did to place the inlets where they put them.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's the end of the modifications, 17. Before we take action on any of those, Cindy, have you received any requests by the chat to have input to the plan?
I believe Linda has a desire to speak. Linda Webb from Lawrence Boulevard.
Okay.
If you look under Cole, John, to unmute.
Looking on it.
Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak. Many of the homeowners on Lawrence Boulevard have lived here for many years, and our central concerns are the safety issues arising from the new housing development. And they are pulling out on Centerville Road, more traffic in the neighborhood, rush hour traffic and construction vehicle traffic. First and foremost, it's hazardous on a good day to pull out on Centerville Road from Bunny Drive or Pheasant Drive. People simply do not follow the speed limit on Centerville Road. This is evident by the numerous close calls incurred by neighbors, visitors, and myself. With an additional 55 homeowners using Lawrence Boulevard, how will safety issues be addressed? Also, during AM and PM rush hours, cars are backed up on Centerville Road waiting for the light to change at Marietta Pike. It's hard enough to pull out on Centerville Road during rush hour, and with the added traffic, it will be nearly impossible. In closing, we are losing so much farm land due to excessive development in our township. Not many people have had the good fortune of having farm land meet their backyard for over 60 years. I have had that. I will surely miss my peaceful view and my once quiet street. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Was there anybody else, Cindy?
Mr. Hersler, also Lawrence Boulevard. I don't know if he has any more to add to the comments he has. He was the gentleman that had streetlight on his property.
Right.
He does not agree with no lighting and no sidewalks. Seems unsafe. He does not agree with no lighting and no sidewalks. Seems unsafe.
Ah, yeah, this is Travis Hertzler. I I agree with Linda's comments. I'm also concerned, you know, I I forget who was in the chat, commented about not being able to get up to much speed and like the new development, but they have all of the existing Lawrence Boulevard. And there's people in development already that get up to speed. There's no speed limit signs posted. We don't even have stop signs at Bunny Drive. You know what? Are you going to address any of those safety concerns prior to this being developed? Are you going to wait until, yes, you know, an incident does occur once everybody's, you know, occupied in the, you know, the plans?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the concern, Travis. I'm I'm not sure. I guess I'd have to defer to to John or Cindy as to whether that's in the purview of the supervisors or the road department to put up stop signs and so forth.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Hertzler. I didn't hear all of your
Yeah, I was just concerned with basically the extension of Lawrence Boulevard and not addressing like the current homeowners that live on Lawrence Boulevard. You know, somebody made a comment about not getting up to speed, but I feel like, you know, homeowners currently already get up to speed to kind of use that thruway as, you know, off of Pheasant past our property. You know, there's this speed limit posted and now with added fifty-five homes that are going to come, you know, onto Pheasant, down Lawrence, all the way into their development, you know, there it just doesn't seem safe that that's not addressed. You know, and then there's not going to be any sidewalks put in, no street lamps that just it doesn't, I don't feel like you're protecting the the current homeowners. You know, not taking us into account at all.
If I can comment, the, if you look on the site plans, SP four through, I think it's SP four, three, we are proposing stop signs at the intersection, stop sign or speed limit signs through our development. So unfortunately, I can't control what happens to Lawrence Avenue beyond that, beyond our development. But we are proposing stop signs and speed limit signs through our development.
As additional information and and kind of on the same line there, Lawrence Boulevard is existing. And we have very little control of the development behind your properties. It is allowable development. We we have to accept it. We realize that there is a problem, what not really a problem, but there is traffic on Centerville Road. The township did do improvements to that section. They are doing improvements to the other part of Centerville Road. To do additional improvements to Centerville would require a very significant property purchase to widen that section of Centerville Road. So I I don't believe that the supervisors at this point in time are willing to take that on.
Cindy, how about his comment about no stop signs or speed limit signs in the existing development? I guess Pheasant and Lawrence?
Yeah, I'm a little confused by that. I mean, we can check that out. There probably should be postings for twenty-five. There may not have been because they were typically, they're basically dead end streets, so you have just local traffic. That, of course, is changing, so we can certainly look at that. In terms of the stop signs, I think there's a stop sign at Lawrence and Pheasant. And of course, there's certainly a stop sign at Pheasant and Center.
Any more comments, Cindy?
Well, I just also want to this is my familiarity also with that development. I know there aren't, there isn't a stop sign at Pheasant and Lawrence.
Okay, then then we are, we ought to ask the supervisors to take a look at that, authorize one.
Duly noted. I will check that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm on Google Street View right now and I can confirm there's no and this picture was from July twenty sixteen. There was, there's no stop signs at Lawrence and Pheasant.
Okay, thanks, John. Is that your third arm you're using to check that out?
I'm just that good, Jim.
Oh, man. He pay raise. Okay. Cindy, any further comments on this plan from anybody out the public?
No, that was all that was listed. Uh, Mr. Hughes, but that was addressed by Bill concerning the enforcement of the no parking on one side and the
Talking about sidewalks and putting the onus on the homeowners instead of the developer.
Yeah, the the no parking on on one side will be the responsibility of the police because these will be public streets.
Right.
I believe that was all the comments we had.
Cindy, my my intention probably was to give the HOA some level of enforcement for the parking on one side as well to the HOA docs.
But but they can enforce it themselves. They'd have to call the police, right?
They would, yeah, yeah. But I mean, they they have the ability to, you know, if somebody is a repeat offender, the ability to lean a property or something like that. We often do that. So like I said, I'm happy to add that into the HOA doc as well.
Okay, all right. Do any of the other planning commissioners want to weigh in on any of those modifications before we go back to try to put some motions together?
Um, this is Dan. I I have also an issue about granting waiver of the street lighting. I know there are, as the one proprietor had mentioned, that there is street lighting, not just only on his property, but also also on other parts of Lawrence. So I think it would make sense to, you know, you know, maybe maintain the same type of spacing of lighting. And, you know, especially, you know, we have lighting at the intersections as being provided. But also provide street lining where necessary as, you know, as the spacing is required.
Dan, have you taken a look at the number of lights along Lawrence currently? I I I just look and it looks like there are two pole-mounted PPL streetlights.
There's three.
Three, okay. And a good portion of Lawrence has no overhead electric, everything's underground, and that section has no street lighting at all.
I think there are some environmental concerns to too much sort of light pollution. But I certainly not would prefer to keep that to a minimum. I don't think adding any extra would be necessary in my view.
I'm fine with having lights at the intersections.
Yeah, I think.
Just just to confirm, are they going to be at both intersections? Aaron or Bill, can you answer that?
What was the question?
Streetlights, are they going to be at both of the intersections in your development?
They are going to be at all intersections, yes.
Which is only two of them, right?
Correct.
Yes, is the T, the T is considered an intersection then?
Correct.
Okay. How about in the cul-de-sacs? Wouldn't it be good to have that street lighting at each of the cul-de-sacs, the temporary one and the permanent one?
Well, the issue with putting lighting in the cul-de-sac is where do you put it? Do you put it at the end of the temporary pavement? Or possibly where the roadway is going to continue? So if you put it at the edge of the temporary pavement and that pavement goes away, then you have a street light sitting in some middle of somebody's yard. So typically, we don't do that.
And I I would agree with that, too, that if I live on the cul-de-sac, the light along the streets to help improve safety at the cul-de-sac, it's not improving safety for anybody because you have a limited number of people going to the cul-de-sac that live down there.
On the cul-de-sac that's permanent, I'd rather have a light than a fence or a guardrail. That's the one that maybe would concern me for safety.
You're talking at the end of.
Yeah.
It could also possibly probably a better place would be where the emergency access enters that cul-de-sac would be a probably a good place to put a light.
That, yeah, that's true, Dan. That's a good inner, that's actually an intersection.
That's a good idea.
Well, we agree to that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Whichever modification that is, let's hold that one out for separate discussion or separate vote to make sure that we get that changed the modification before we take that, take action. Because somebody mentioned, tell us which one that is.
It's number six.
Number six, okay. Okay, going one more time. Anybody else want to get their oar in the water here on any of these?
Tom Bennett, did you get your comment addressed by Scott? Or Scott, did you address Tom Bennett's comment?
I did. I I got an answer, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Like to try to get to a point where we have some motions here on some modifications. According to according to my notes, we would have modifications one, two, five, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen.
Correct.
Are are recommended for approval.
Yeah, I'm comfortable making a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications, one, two, five, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second that. That was Brent.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Detter, that we recommend approval of modifications, one, two, five, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, per the engineers' comments. John, would you take the roll call, please?
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldis?
Aye.
Mr. Detter?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne? Mrs. Byrne?
Sorry, John, I had somehow muted it. Yeah, aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
And just so, just so I'm clear, that was one, two, five, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen?
That's correct.
Correct.
So if I may, number eight was also to be.
We we wanted to take that one separately because there was a question whether we wanted to change that to defer or grant.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
So since he's got that up on the screen, let's take a look at that one. Somebody want to make a motion one way or the other?
Yeah, I I guess I would make a motion. And I'm going to group a number of these in there. I would make a motion that we deny waiver requests, but deferral be granted for modification number three, four, eight, nine, thirteen and fourteen. I have not included six in there. I think we need to discuss six further.
Yeah, that's the list I had too.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend deferral of, I'm sorry, deny the modification request and recommend deferral be granted for modifications, three, four, eight, nine, thirteen, fourteen. John, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Will? Mrs. Will?
Am I able to abstain?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that your vote, Miss?
Yes.
Mr. Caldis?
Aye.
Mr. Detter?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye. So I believe that is six in favor and one extension. So that leaves us with modification number six. John, could you scroll up again? Thank you. The last discussion we had was talking about adding a third light to the cul-de-sac and the emergency exit or entrance area.
What are the applicant's thoughts on that discussion? I mean, we're we're concerned about the safety of those two spots.
I think I saw comments that they agreed to do it.
Yeah, we had a discussion about, well, I thought the discussion was about adding a streetlight at the internal intersection, correct? At where it intersects the cul-de-sac on Lawrence.
We were talking about your two intersections and adding one at the cul-de-sac where the emergency entrance comes in.
That, that's correct. I agreed to that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So there would be total of three, like three lighting areas.
What do we want to do for safety at the permanent cul-de-sac?
Well, that that streetlight is in the permanent cul-de-sac where it'll be.
Oh, is that where the, I don't have the plan up.
Yeah, that's where the emergency access enters into the permanent cul-de-sac on the end of.
Excellent, okay.
Yeah, so there would be nothing at the temporary cul-de-sac light.
Which, that makes sense. So it's going to feel like Lawrence has some lighting there because you're going to have two lights installed on Lawrence.
It would be three, one at the transition between old and new Lawrence, and then at the intersection of Billy and Lawrence and at the cul-de-sac.
I don't think so, Dan. I don't think they're going to put one at the transition.
Yeah, we said that was a smooth transition. We didn't think we needed a light there.
Right. The other one did the hammerhead.
Over there, yeah. Yeah, with the transition smooth, I'm comfortable not having lighting there.
Same here.
Somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll take a stab. I'll make a motion and we recommend to the supervisors approval of modification. Uh Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll take a stab. I'll make a motion and we recommend to the supervisors approval of modification eight with the change that they add and another.
Modification six.
Six, excuse me, adding another street light at the uh transition point for the emergency access drive and the permanent cul-de-sac.
I'll second that.
Can I just clarify that we removed the transition? I don't want anybody to get confused that it's a transition between the Lawrence Avenue and where we're proposing.
Correct, yeah. My motion is only to modify six to add the street light at the emergency exit permanent cul-de-sac site, and I don't know where it should be in that. You can work that out with staff.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Detter, that we recommend approval of modification number six with the addition of a third light at the emergency access and permanent cul-de-sac area. Well, those are thing, or no, forget that. John, please call them.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Detter? Mr. Detter?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne? Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous, seven to zero. Okay, now that the modifications are out of the way, we can take action on the final plan.
Mr. Fullerton, before you, before you jump to there, there are a couple of comments in the chat regarding the impact of traffic to Bunny Drive. Perhaps the developer or Scott Hane could maybe expand on what the traffic study showed or was, what the scope was.
I'll defer to Scott. I'm not really sure what the questions are.
There's a question about what about the, what about the added traffic on Bunny and Lawrence? It has not been addressed.
The plan was reviewed by the Township's Traffic Engineer McMahon Associates. There is a comment letter that was generated. It did not point out any items that need to be addressed. As far as the plan goes, they noted the length of cul-de-sac, which was addressed with a waiver. They don't have any other issues. Yeah, they had, they had no other issues that needed to be addressed because of the impact of this development at this time. And they said the analysis that was provided was acceptable. I don't know if that answers your questions, but the traffic was looked at per the requirements of the ordinance and the study that they provided was reviewed by the Township's Transportation or Traffic Engineer and he concurred with the conclusions in the study.
Were there other questions, Cindy?
There were not.
I'm sorry, Cindy, go ahead.
Just to provide some clarity to the residents, the intersection of Bunny and Lawrence to Centerville are really off-site to this development. Is that correct? In terms of the ordinance requirements?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Those are all the comments we have right now.
I do, I did look at McMahon's letter, and as Cindy pointed out, Chris Bauer, Township Traffic Engineer, does note that the off-site intersection of Bunny Drive and Centerville Road marginally meets northbound left-turn lane warrants during the PM peak hour utilizing PennDOT standards. He recommends this situation should be monitored in the future as traffic increases. He also notes that the applicant is not recommending traffic control devices at the internal intersections of Pheasant Drive, Lawrence Boulevard, Bunny Drive, Lawrence Boulevard and Billy Drive, Lawrence Boulevard. For safe and efficient vehicular access and traffic flow through the development, traffic control devices should be provided.
And again, I believe those are off-site intersections to this development. The township would look at those.
Pheasant Drive and Lawrence Boulevard, Bunny Drive and Lawrence Boulevard are off-site. Billy Drive and Lawrence Boulevard are internal to this development.
Correct, and they are proposing a stop sign at Billy.
So what are our limitations, John, for asking an applicant to do off-site work with regard to traffic?
That's what it is, Mr. Rohr, an ask. We do not have any legal authority to make them do any improvements off-site.
So, so John, what, what, are they asking for recommending stop signs at Pheasant and Lawrence?
I'm assuming that's what Chris means. He says traffic control devices, but most likely a stop, stop signs.
I mean, listen, I, I will agree to add them. I mean, obviously, the board supervisors would have to authorize the addition of stop signs at those locations, but I, I have no problem adding them or installing them.
Yeah, I would say the other thing to think about adding would be no-through street or some signage such as that. Uh I'm, I am concerned just because we have so many people on Centerville Road trying to find a way to avoid traffic. And if they, if they come, come in here, this isn't the way to do it, they're gonna get a dead end. Though, it seems to me like we ought to have some signage probably even off-site to indicate that there's no through way. But I, I defer to the road people on that, but.
Well, I, I know that there is a no outlet sign internal on Lawrence.
Good.
There is an existing no outlet sign, so I believe that sign shouldn't be removed. I think that could stay there and it still functions the way it is.
Is there another place that should be one? I don't know that area well enough to know, you know, people getting off Centerville Road and, and driving in there looking for another way to go. Is there another spot? We should alert them?
I'll take a look at that.
Okay. And Jim, if you're ready for some questions, I had a question on the plan. Is, is the, the portion of this property that comes out to Oyster Point then, is that a buildable lot?
The, are you referring to the property adjacent to Stony Battery Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in conversations with the township. We're looking to have that dedicated as a rec area.
Oh, okay. That would be below your stormwater retention or basin area infiltration?
There, there's some wetland streams and, and some trees that we'd like to maintain there, so.
There's probably not land to put a couple of houses there if you had, but I'd rather you didn't.
We, you know, initially we looked at it, but you know, we, we decided not to do it just because of the access on Stony Battery and everything.
Okay, I saw it's, it's one lot in itself at this point, so.
Correct.
Okay.
With, with the most recent submission, that lot was separated off of the rest of the open space with the intent that it was gonna be dedicated to the township as, as public open space. They had, an early concept that we saw did have lots along Stony Battery Road. Township staff was, was pretty strongly opposed to any additional driveways onto Stony Battery Road, especially with the multiple lanes that are created there for the turning movements. So the developer worked with us and removed those lots and worked them in somewhere else.
And I think Keystone has a good reputation for the developments that they do, so. Like, it's Keystone, right?
It is Keystone, yes. And thank you. We try hard.
I mean, Jim, I'm comfortable with the plan as long as we do take a look at the signage to uh make sure people don't see this as a throughway to, to get around traffic.
Yeah, I think it's been noted a couple of times now for Cindy and John to take back to Perry and the supervisors. Any other commissioners have comments or questions before we take a motion on the plan?
I have none.
Okay, then I'm, I'm ready for a motion, so I would like to create one.
Uh Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors approval of, of this plan of the staff, staff for property uh subject to the staff and engineers' comments as well as our comments this evening with regard to the uh safety and signage of the roadways.
I'll second that.
Okay, once again, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Detter, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for the Stuffer proper subdivision at thirty forty-seven Marriott Avenue, subject to staff and engineer comments in the discussion this evening. Mr. Beck, would you please? Call for the vote?
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Detter?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, our next plan is twenty-two twenty Dairy Road Warehouse. We have, uh I believe, six modifications here plus the final land development plan. Is there somebody on the call from the applicants?
Uh yes, good evening. Kevin Ember from R2 Associates is the site engineer for the plan. Um and I'll just mention also on the call, I believe, are um John Schick, our, our traffic engineer, and then uh Larry Prescott, Glenn Frill and Mike Esterly, who are representing uh with the applicant and the, the developer of this site. So I can just give a brief introduction um of the plan and uh then go through a couple items in uh David Miller Associates review letter. So I believe most of the members were probably at the planning commission meeting in, in March where we presented pretty much uh identical plan for the site at twenty-two twenty Dairy Road. Uh what was presented, the sketch plan is, is still um basically what is what presented here, which is a seventy thousand uh square foot warehouse building. That would be a buy rate use in the enterprise zone where this uh product is located. And so it would fall under a general industrial category. It's a facility that's only proposing about twenty employees and would have some limited uh truck docks for, for deliveries. What the, the end user at this point is a Fillmore container, which they deal in, in bulk glassware and some wax materials for, for candles, so they, they basically get those materials in, break them down and uh ship them out for, for mostly smaller wholesale um deliveries and, and customers. So at, at this point, um as far as the, the David Miller letter, we have addressed most of the, the technical comments in their most recent review. There, there's a couple remaining technical comments that I believe we can um accommodate. Most of the remaining comments in their review letter are, are dealing with coordination with some of the outside agency approvals. Some comments on the cost estimate and stormwater agreements and um just coordination with the township on some of the other reviews for emergency services and, and uh traffic study comments. Um now, we did just receive this afternoon some comments from the Township's Traffic Engineer. So we're still kind of digesting those comments and we'll probably need a little bit of time to respond to them. Um but I, I think our goal for tonight would be to uh go over the, there's a couple requested waivers and deferrals regarding the plan, mostly related to frontage improvements on Dairy Road and some, some modifications on some of the, the landscape buffering requirements for the site, which we have addressed to the satisfaction of, of Scott and David Miller Associates at this point. So I, I'll leave it up to you for questions at this point, or, or if you want to go down waiver by waiver and have any discussion on those. We can move ahead with that.
Okay, Kevin, thank you. Um my suggestion would be like the previous plan, that we go through the modifications first, take a look at them one, one by one. See if there's anything there that any of the commissioners would like to get more information on or, or take issue with. And then we'll come back and put motions together to approve or defer them, whatever the case may be. Uh the first one is one we saw about an hour ago, I think, same thing about sidewalks on both sides of the street. Rather than uh granting that or denying it, we would recommend a deferral in case at some time in the future, the supervisors would want to do something along the length there of the road that they could come back and ask you to do it. That's been, that's been pretty standard verbiage for many years in our, when dealing with this modification. Uh I believe, I, oh, I can't see the whole thing, but number two is uh having to do with buffer planning and spacing of trees, I believe. So this would be recommended for conditional approval based on the comments of the township engineer. Is there anything in particular you'd like to clarify there or expound upon, Scott?
No, I think we've worked with, we've worked with Kevin already, I think, on what we want to see there. I don't think, you don't have any issues complying with that, do you, Kevin?
No, and I think, you know, through some clarification with you, Scott, the, the current plan, I believe, shows um what these recommendations were and takes those into account. Yeah, basically, the, the main thing we're requesting is since the property abuts the, the railroad on the southern property boundary and um, you know, the building's really only taking up about half of the lot back there, we're, we're requesting some modifications to not do a full fifteen-foot wide buffer of, the full length, um given that the railroad's there and, and there's some adjacent trees on the railroad property and the property to the south, which is undeveloped.
With the location of the property adjacent to the railroad and adjacent to the highway, essentially, I think we're, we're satisfied with what they've done. It's just a matter of having to address the, the requirements of the ordinance with this relief.
Okay, scroll down one more, John, please, to number three. Wait, that's in the same thing, is that correct?
Correct.
Looks like number four has to do with curving sidewalks and pavement widening. And as the prior plan, we would deny that as requested, but granted deferral. Recommended deferral. Pretty much the same thing there.
Yeah, with, with number four, there was a condition that a, a fee in lieu would be provided for the required pavement widening. That's, that's been consistent with all the projects that have been through the commission recently. And that's coordinated with the public works director to make sure he's satisfied with the proposed fee for the improvements.
So four is actually a deferral plus a condition?
Yeah.
Deferral with conditions?
Yeah, that they pay the fee in lieu of.
And that would be the same for five?
Right.
Now, is that? That's deferral as well, right? Even though you say granted in the middle, are we recommending?
They actually, they actually requested a deferral of that as opposed.
Oh, okay. So that's conditional. Conditional for five. And the last one, number six?
That had, this has to do with the, the size of the bottom of the detention basin. And it's, the size of the bottom's a little bit smaller than what the ordinance looks for. But in these cases where it's sort of close, we defer to the applicant's hydrology and hydraulics engineer, and they provide a letter saying that the, that the proposed design is, is still acceptable based on their study, and we were agreeable with that.
Do the planning commission members have any thoughts on any of these modifications?
I can say that the property has a lot of natural buffering to it already. With there, there's trees around the, the back and of course, the rail line and.
Yeah, what, what's the zoning on the other side of the rail line, John?
It gets ag holding or is it residential? That was the zinc property back there. What was that?
It's ag holding to the south.
Okay. It was, it was the thins, well, I won't say thin sliver, but it was the part of Independence that stuck out towards the east there, Jim.
Okay.
Below the squash plant, between the squash plant and the railroad tracks.
Yeah, so it's out past Dairy Road?
Well, it's on the other side of the tracks.
I'm sorry, not Dairy Road, Sylvan Road.
Yeah, out Sylvan Road.
Yeah.
It's a combination of the Kreider Farm and the Brubaker Farm.
Okay, Brubaker, not zinc, okay.
Cindy, have you received any comments or requests, comment on the chats for this?
There are none.
If there's no further discussion required, we could take action on modifications. Seems like we have quite a few different options. We have deferral, we have conditional, we have deferral with conditions, and we have straight granting. So it seems like there's four groups of modifications here.
I'll do the easy one to start. I'll make a recommendation that we I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval and modification number six, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I can. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ror, seconded by Mrs. Byrne. And we recommend approval of modification number six, subject to the engineers' comments. Mr. Beck, please take the role.
Mrs. Will?
Hi.
Mr. Caldis?
Hi.
Mr. Deter?
Hi.
Mr. Biggs?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Ror?
Hi.
Mr. Fullerton?
Hi. Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. I had deferral for number one and conditional approval for two, three, and five. And deferral with conditions on number four.
I don't know if we can handle all them in one motion, or do you want them separated, Jim?
I don't know. We, we could probably take them all as one. I don't think there's much controversy with any of them. Do you want to try?
Oh, I'll give it a shot. So I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors denial and deferral of modification number one. Conditional approval of modifications two and three. And five, I think.
Correct.
And a deferral with conditions for modification number four.
I'd like to point out that there are conditions for the deferral with modification number one.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to say number one is condition. Yeah, I, I thought I did. Oh, no, you're right. Number one and number four would be modified with conditions.
You need a second again?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ror, seconded by Mrs. Byrne. We recommend denial and deferral with conditions for modifications one and four. And recommend conditional approval for modifications two, three, and five, all subject to the engineers' comments. Mr. Beck, would you please follow?
Mrs. Will?
Hi.
Mr. Caldis?
Hi.
Mr. Deter?
Hi.
Mr. Biggs?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Ror?
Hi.
Mr. Fullerton?
Hi. So that motion is approved, seven to zero. Kevin, I believe you said you were comfortable with the comments in the David Miller letter, so if there's nothing there that you would take exception to, we can proceed with the motion on the plan.
Yeah, I'm assuming the public didn't have any comments on this one. So I will make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors, the final plan, subject to staff and engineer comments, for the Dairy Road Warehouse.
Second.
Okay, once again, we have a motion by Mr. Ror, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of the 2220 Dairy Road Warehouse Plan, Final Land Development Plan, subject to staff and engineers' comments. Mr. Beck, would you please follow?
Mrs. Will?
Hi.
Mr. Caldis?
Hi.
Mr. Deter?
Hi.
Mr. Biggs?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Ror?
Hi.
Mr. Fullerton?
Hi. So that motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. So that, that ends the action items for this evening. John, you want to take us through the new business plans?
Thank you, Mr. Fullerton. If the members of the planning commission remember most recently, I believe it was back in May, Dutch Valley Auto Works before the planning commission with a sketch plan for a subdivision of the existing lots on Industry Drive and
Columbia Avenue.
Columbia Avenue. They have filed a final subdivision land development plan in keeping with that sketch plan. Staff is currently going through the reviews, and that will be coming to the planning commission in a future meeting for action.
John, now we have a, an ordinance scheduled for the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes, it would be the Village zoning amendments.
Was there any old business to come before the commission?
Not at this time.
Cindy, or is there anybody else out there from the public that has any comments about other items than what was on the agenda?
There is not.
Then if there's no further business to come before a commission, I would call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Jim. See you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Good night.